Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1248, April 16, 2015. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Click call to roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Cottle?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lives? Southall?
Here.
There are motions, Mr. Burns.
Move that we excuse Councilman Lives?
Second.
The move is second that we excuse Councilman Lives. Is there any discussion? There are none, although there are favorites to excuse Councilman Lives. Let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Close. Councilman Lives is accused. Any other items on the agenda for minutes? You should all receive copies of those minutes. If, are there any changes or deletions, additions to the minutes? There are none of the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three, presentations. I show no presentations on the agenda for the evening. So we would move then to item four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public to address council? Lieutenant Hill?
Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir.
I come today as a member of the Fire Department and a representative from We Thrive Forest Park. I wanted to invite not only you guys but the general public to a meeting that we're having on April 22nd. It'll be in this room, council chambers, so April 22nd, from 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. Through Hamilton County Public Health, an epidemiologist, he did a report, a health report or study on Forest Park, and it categorized most of the social and health ills that are hurting our city. And we put together a committee, but we're looking to add, we want to invite out business people, merchants, doctors, teachers, parents, anyone that has a stake in Forest Park. We want them here at this meeting not only to hear about the social ills, but to help us form a plan of attack. So if anyone would love to, if anyone would like to join us, please contact me here at the firehouse, area code 513-595-5291. Ask for Jermaine, and I'll take care of you. We need your input.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Lieutenant Hill? There are none. Thank you very much for the information. Appreciate your coming. Anybody else from the public? There are none. We would then move to item number five, reports of standing committees. The first of those, Republican improvement facilities, Councilman Southall.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and good evening. I'd like to, one item I'd like to report, in the public and Park and Recreation Commission, which met on April 1st in the conference room 3B in the building, we had several discussions. And one of the discussions, well, it was four of them, the spring soccer season, they talked about that, and the Gospel Fest, which marched the 28th, which was very successful. And they also, the third item that they talked about was the current senior center and activity center rental agreements. And that's been a discussion for quite some time. And it seems that the commission is basically, wants to leave the agreements basically as the commission set them out. The next thing, on the activity center, there was a recent event or where, situation rather, where the occupants or the potential occupant or persons that wanted to rent the facility weren't able to use it as a result of uncleanliness of the building. So the staff is working on that particular item in terms of negotiating with the present genitorial company and possibly getting rid of that company and changing to another company. So the reason I mention that because last council meeting, Council, Mrs. Holt mentioned or asked me about that particular item, and I wanted to bring that back. So that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? There are none, Mr. Southall. I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session on the 13th, that's meaning the 2014 Street Program contract. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time, sir. I do not.
Okay. Next standing committee reports, Public Safety, Mr. Lives. Mr. Lives is not here. Is there anyone who have a report for him?
I'd like to, as a member of the Safety Committee, I would like to highlight an item that was listed in this month's publication about safety, car and truck safety. Car and truck safety, we know that we're in the warm months, and there has been many, many incidents where children would get inside the cars, empty car or the trunk itself. And a lot of times, they get trapped inside. And there's several tips to eliminate that situation. One, keeping the cars and trucks, trunks locked at all times. Teach children not to play in and around cars, and never leave children unattended in the car, even with the windows down. The same is true with pets. Put your car keys out of children's reach in sight, and use caution with children's resistant locks. Teach children how to disable the driver's door locks if they're all locked inside of the motor vehicle. Contact automobile dealership about getting a trunk release for your car if you don't have one. Those are the tips that I wanted to highlight, Mr. Jermaine, and that's the end of the safety report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Councilman Southall? Next committee reports, Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes. In a previous meeting, I had mentioned that Meritas, to celebrate its building of its new facility in Forest Park, was going to do something on behalf of the city, and the tentative plans at that time were May 2nd. The plans have firmed up, and they've changed the date. It will take place on Saturday, May 16th, at Central Park from 2:30 to 5:30. And you can anticipate live entertainment, food, a visit from the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Gardens and their wings of wonder. There'll be children's activities and a classic car show. The other thing I wanted to mention is, in the last year or so, we had opened up a recycling center behind a municipal building, particularly thinking of people in apartments who don't have access to recycling facilities. There are additional drop-off sites that have been opened in Forest Park. One is at Forest Chapel Church on Sharon Road, and one is at the North Central Branch Library, which is actually outside of Forest Park but close to us, on Hamilton Avenue over by the Civic Center. Also, there's going to be a paper shredding event taking place on Saturday, the 23rd. The city's partnering with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority in developing a free paper shredding event for the greater Forest Park area. It'll be Saturday, May 23rd, from 10:00 to 1:00 at the Witten Woods High School parking lot. And then that shredded paper is then also recycled. Also, the Witten Woods Cleanup, which is an annual event where volunteers meet at Kestrel Point, which is right next to the administrative building on the west side of Sharon Road, is taking place on Saturday, April 11th. The citywide yard sale that many of our residents participate in takes place on Saturday, May 2nd. And there is a composting bin and rain barrel seminar taking place on Wednesday, May 6th. You have to sign up to attend that through the Hamilton County Solid Waste Department because it's actually a county program. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? There are none, Councilwoman Herbie. I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 13th. You have any to add?
No, sir.
Also, I do not have any items for Councilman Lives, Public Safety. Next committee reports, Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a couple of things I'd like to say. Don't have any formal report. In our last work session, we did have the Port Authority here, and they shared quite a bit of information as it relates to many of the properties that we work with them on in the city, and I just wanted to formally thank them for that report. It was very thorough and very insightful, and I know that our Economic Development Director will be working through that with them and partnering. And also wanted to thank our Fire Department for their participation in the funeral ceremonies for PFA George Brook, I'm sorry, Daryl Gordon. For some people, you may not know, he was actually our neighbor. He lived in Glendale. So it was good and fitting that our Fire Department could participate in that, would also send condolences to the family of George Brooks, former police officer in Forest Park, and would like to also personally send my condolences to Sally for the loss of her mother. My travels prevented me from attending, so, sorry for your loss, Sally. Would also remind residents that April 15th is quickly upon us, and that is tax day. So if, you know, would hopefully that everybody is working with the Finance Department to complete their local, federal, and state taxes, but the local taxes are important, and our Finance Department is working hard, I'm sure, to accommodate everyone. And with that, that would conclude my comments. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, I have no items for you listed on the agenda. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
I do have one item I have not, that I won't want to add on to the agenda on the Community Development, but I think that's regarding code. I will give it to Sally when I get it all straightened out and have her to pass it on to you. Next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no reports this evening. Thanks.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? There are none. Councilwoman Cottle, I have no report for you. Do you have anything to add? No items for you to have any to add?
No, thank you.
Next report is Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a human resource report tonight, but I too, Sally, would like to publicly give you my condolences, and sorry I couldn't have been there with you or for you because I was out of town also, but know that I am here if you need me.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, it would conclude my report.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have one item on the agenda for you, is appointments to boards and commissions. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. The next report is General Government and Communication Relations. That's mine. I have no report. I have no items on the agenda for the next meeting. I will answer any questions if there are any. There are none. We move to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just echo some of the comments of Councilman Burns regarding the participation of our safety people in the funeral of the firefighter who lost his life. And also to just pass on the information that the services for retired officer Brooks, who was killed in an accident heading to a leading funeral procession. The viewing, the visitation would be on Friday, April 10th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at Hall Jordan Funeral Home here on Witten Road. The funeral services itself will be Saturday, the 11th, at 10:00 a.m. at Word of Deliverance. And the interment would be in, at Green Lawn Cemetery in Milford at 10:00 a.m. on Monday the 13th. And I'm sure that many of his fellow comrades and city officials will be attending those services. And our prayers go out to he and his family. And also, again, Sally, I would like to express my condolences to your family for your loss. And on a personal note, to say that it was good seeing your dad again. He and I kind of go way back, so it was good to see him again.
Thank you.
That would conclude my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. There are none. The next report would be the City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I too want to express condolences to the family of Sally Huffman and also to our former employee, George Brooks. I want to also report that the departmental reports have been completed, included in the council packet, and made available for the public inspection. And finally, I would report that the Norflin Boulevard Road Improvement Project is underway. We have a little bit of adjustment to make because of the rain conditions to start with, but that project is well on the way. And not so much to report, but to also advise council that our Finance Director is recovering from her surgery, and hopefully she'll continue to improve and get back with us soon. But that would conclude my report, and I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any question for the City Manager? There are none. Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Next item is item number eight, other reports, the first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last meeting, I provided Mr. Hodges a summary of a couple of recent decisions, one involving the city's responsibility for burial expenses for indigent citizens, the other being the importance of properly convening the executive session and making sure you specify exactly what the session is about as compared to using a generic or general term in describing the need for the session. Also, I did a follow-up opinion on political activities, particularly related to the Fire Fund, contrasting that to a partisan election where election activities are prohibited when it's a partisan matter. Finally, I did send also a letter to the Ohio Election Commission about the defunct Forest Fair, or Forest Park Fire Levy Group that was run by Mr. McClavick. And after speaking with the commission's attorney, he advised that I write a letter, which I did, in the hopes that we'll somehow be able to close that account and have the money that's sitting in a bank account some, in some way addressed. But the concern he had is, in such situations, the Ohio Election Commission will grab that money and call it fines and penalties. But he said he'll do his best for us to get a different result. That's the end of my report. Unless there are any questions.
Any question for the Law Director? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, John, I just want to thank you publicly for that. I mean, that was, I just want to thank you for taking care of that because I know Mrs. McClavick was trying to work through that issue to no avail, and I'm sure that was a big relief for her in understanding the right process to go through. So thank you for giving her that.
And I have to thank Mr. Hodges because he made it very clear that she did need that assistance and sought any advice I could give.
Any other questions for Mr. Wykoff? There are none. Thank you, Mr. Wykoff, for your report, and we will go to the next report. It will be the Clerk of Council, Mrs. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report the Resolution Number 12-2015, and ordinance number 02-2015 were posted as required. And I'd also like to thank everyone for their condolences, cards, and flowers, and comments, and just for being there for me. So thank you, everyone, for that. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? There are none. Thank you. And we'll go to item number nine, new business. The first item of new business is resolution, Resolution Number 13-2015. Would the Clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution Number 13-2015, accepting the bid of Jeffrey Allen Corporation for the Kemper Meadows Park Restoration. Whereas, the City of Forest Park has hereby to advertise for bids for the Kemper Meadows Park Restoration, and whereas said bids were received and opened on March 11th, 2015, and the bids were tabulated as follows. Bidder Engineers' Estimate Base Bid $204,367.33. Bidder Jeffrey Allen Corporation Base Bid $134,474. Bidder Ford Development Base Bid $163,025. Bidder Sinisus Construction Base Bid $198,776.20. Bidder Deetering Landscape Base Bid $268,600. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, Section 1, that the bid of Jeffrey Allen Corporation in the amount of $134,474, which is the total project base bid, is hereby accepted as the lowest and best bid. Section 2, that the City Manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a contract with Jeffrey Allen Corporation for work to be performed as specified in the Kemper Meadows Park Restoration bidding documents. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force from and after its passage.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I offer motion that the Resolution 13-2015 be received for adoption, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution 13-2015. Is there a discussion, Mr. Southall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The low bid that was issued by Jeffrey Allen Corporation met the engineer's basic estimated cost. So therefore, we feel that the, the staff feels that this company has done a lot of work for us in the past, and this will save a lot of local dollars and allow us to stretch our limited resources for further otherwise possibilities. The grant will be 55% of the project, and 45% and our local share will come from the Storm Utility Fund. With that, I offer a motion that the Resolution 13-2015 be adopted.
Is there any further discussion on the resolution? There are none. Would the Clerk call the roll on Resolution Number 13-2015?
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Resolution 13-2015 passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item B, would be Resolution Number 14-2015. Would the Clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution Number 14-2015, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with FIZO Control, Inc., for one life PAC 15 ECG Monitor Defibrillator Unit. Whereas, it is the desire of the Council of the City of Forest Park to authorize the purchase of one life PAC 15 ECG Monitor Defibrillator Unit, and whereas said unit is available from FIZO Control, Inc., 11811 Willow's Road Northeast, Post Office 97006, Redmond, Washington, 98073-9706, and whereas sufficient funds are available from the Fire Fund for the purchase of said unit. And whereas, based on the availability of said unit at a state of Ohio minimum bidding, whereas based on the availability of said unit at a state of Ohio minimum bidding requirement, it is the best interest of the City of Forest Park to proceed with the purchase without the formal bidding process, as said unit is at the best price to meet the city's needs. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, Section 1, that the formal bidding process for the purchase of one life PAC 15 ECG Monitor Defibrillator Unit is hereby waived. Section 2, that the City Manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with FIZO Control, Inc., for the purchase of one life PAC 15 ECG Monitor Defibrillator Unit in an amount of $27,461.60, which is the total amount after a $13,148.40 allowance for state discounts and our trade-in of one life PAC 12. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect after the passage.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Holt?
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 14-2015.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution 14-2015. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Holt?
Well, since it was read in full, I'll just reiterate the fact that this should be a simple purchase because the, the price came from the state, from the state bid sheet, and the normal price of it was over $40,000. And with the discount from the state and the trade-in, then the price drops down to a little over $20,000. And this, they will trade in a 20, a 2005 as a trade-in towards this one, and they would still have four units, 2005, I mean, 2006, 2009, 2012, and 2015. With that, I urge adoption, passage of Resolution Number 14-2015.
Any further discussion or question, Mr. Burns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm just reading paragraph four, where it says, based on the availability of said unit at a state of Ohio minimum bidding requirement, should that be at the, should the A be replaced? Because it sounds like it's referring to the minimum, the state minimum bidding list or registry? I'm just trying to understand the wording here.
I would just, I would consider to typo and just remove the letter and move the A.
Is that, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussions? There are none. Would the Clerk call the roll on Resolution 14-2015?
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 14-2015 passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item C, Resolution Number 15-2015. Would the Clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution Number 15-2015, a resolution confirming appointments to the 2015 Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council from the City of Forest Park. Whereas, the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council, TIRC, was established by the Hamilton County Commissioners to review the status of enterprise zone agreements granted to companies in return for their expansion and or relocation to our community. And whereas, the City of Forest Park has prudently and judiciously used the Enterprise Zone Program to successfully attract and retain businesses in our community. And whereas, the City of Forest Park also represents information, also presents information to the Tax Incentive Review Council on any tax increment financing projects in our community to evaluate their effectiveness in attracting investment and creating jobs. And whereas, Hamilton County and the City of Forest Park closely monitor enterprise zone and tax increment financing projects for compliance to guarantee that the interests of local taxpayers are protected. And whereas, the City of Forest Park has been requested by the Hamilton County Office of Economic Development to submit two people for appointment to the 2015 Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council. And whereas, both appointees must be residents of the City of Forest Park. And whereas, both appointees must be residents of the City of Forest Park and approved by the Council of the City of Forest Park. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that the Council of the City of Forest Park hereby designates City Councilor Diana Herbie and Economic Development Director Paul Brim to represent the City of Forest Park on the 2015 Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of Resolution Number 15-2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 15-2015. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Again, because this was read, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is the countywide group that reviews all of our TIF agreements and enterprise zone agreements. And they do from time to time write letters if people are not in compliance with the goals that were set and that their TIF or enterprise zone is contingent on. So I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the Clerk call the roll on Resolution Number 15-2015?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Resolution 15-2015 passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item D, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie, for Councilman Lives.
Yes, I would move to reappoint Ms. Rhonda Hobbs and Ms. Jamie McCarter from Forest Park and to concur with the Village of Green Hills's reappointment of Mr. Jonathan Palmer to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and the CPB Holdings Incorporated. These board terms expire March 31st of 2018.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve a motion reappointing Ms. Hobbs and Ms. McCarthy in concurring with the Green Hills appointments. Is there any discussions?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item E, a motion, Councilwoman Cottle.
I move to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request to Eagle Group LLC doing business as Jack's Tavern, 1081 Smiley Avenue, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution to notify the Department of Liquor Control that we do not request a hearing on a liquor license for Jack's Tavern. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Burns, did you have a question?
I just want to just make sure and clarify that this particular location is the former Buffalo Wild Wings. And the limitations set forth in the ordinance related to this, they have not exceeded that six-month period, correct?
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any further business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none, council meeting is adjourned.